Okay, just keep standing up. All right, at 6:30, we'd like to call this meeting to order. If everyone would stand and join us in the pledge. Welcome, everyone. We're trying to be on top. Okay, council has their agenda before them. Is there a motion we approve? Or are there changes?
I make a motion we approve the agenda. I will second.
Are there any announcements this evening?
No.
For public comments. Ruth, I see you're signed up, but you're also on the agenda. Do you want to? Yeah, you have a spot on the agenda. Okay, so let's get that. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so first up, we have Tammy Ross.
It is lights on. Okay. Okay. Hello. Um. So I wanted to talk about a park programmer, which I know y'all heard about at the last, maybe your last meeting or the meeting before, but I was not here. And I just wanted to give my two cents. I know that y'all went with a new park maintenance person and it might be putting that off, but I just wanted to stress that we really would like a park programmer. And by we, I mean the citizens of Mills River. And they said so in the survey that we filled out and that they filled out. And I know I know Roger will remember that I said that this is not something that we absolutely have to do as the park plan. But I do want to point out in the part plan that it says, I'm just going to read this to you. It says, "Programs overwhelmingly received support from residents with a 95% response rate for support of some type of parks programming. The town hosted one of its first special events over the holidays and had incredible support in response to the 2020 Mills River Santa Tor by measuring of comparison parks and recreation agencies measure program services through contacts provided. If the access provided during the initial special event is an indication of contacts provided, the town will need to fill this gap in service to meet program demand." Um, so it goes on to say how to fill that demand by hiring a programmer. And then later, under programs, it goes on to say that during the survey, it said, "The town should introduce a program component as staff is available" or added to provide the service and that people said they wanted youth sports, community events, fitness and wellness programs, seniors, 65 and plus programs, and adult sports were highlighted as the most desired programs in areas to start. Um, and I know the Santa Tor was mostly started and done by Nicole, but that was just one event that was hugely successful. Um, and I'm sure whether she would say it because I'm sure an employee never wants to complain and but I can guarantee she did a whole lot of that on her own time and off the clock. And so if you want to do, provide this for our town throughout the year and with other events, we would need a paid employee to do that on the clock. And I know people who live in High Vista and way up yonder don't want to drive 30 minutes to Jackson Park or to Fletcher where they go and spend their money in other towns. And I would love to be able to offer that within our town because our town is great. And and I just would like y'all to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Next, we have Jim Foster. Well, Ruth, as part of her request is on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Well, what I want to speak about about is let me turn it down. What I want to speak about is, what Ruth is going to speak about is to encourage you to seriously consider taking some of this money. I don't know what you call it stimulus money or whatever to help out with Merlak. Merlak has been here operating for 13 years, mostly with volunteers, I think. I think Ruth is going to be speaking, but she may be part time, but she's the only employee. But it's been a very successful program. And if you want to, and this program has certainly been impacted by the virus thing. So we certainly asked that you listen to what she has to say and, and see if we can't divert some of this money for that. This is a worthwhile program. And so like I said, they've been here for 13 years, mostly volunteers. And back when we were working on a comprehensive plan, one of the things that kept coming up was we need more activities for the senior citizens. Well, that's what Merlak does every week. And they, like I say, with a good team of volunteers. So I just ask you serious consideration on what she's come, going to be presenting a little later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, to the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda or motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving to the regular agenda. Item A, we have a nonprofit request from PEG Television, Mr. Bruce McDonald. And I believe he has a presentation for us as well. Mr. McDonald?
Adam, Mayor and counselors, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to tell you a little bit about the proposed Henderson County Community Media Center. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. I don't know if I can use a clicker to show you all the bells and whistles. I'll try to get through that fairly quickly. You have a copy in your, in your folder that I gave to each of you that you can review at your leisure. And this up, some other material that I'll be referring to in the folder. First, I'll tell you a little bit about, about me. Um, I grew up in Hendersonville in the 1950s, 1960s. Graduated from Hendersonville High School in 1965 and the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill in 1969. After three years in the Navy, I headed to Massachusetts to go to law school. And then after graduating, I opened up my own law office in Cambridge, Massachusetts and practiced as a trial lawyer for 38 years. But the winners, the New Orleans winners got the better of me and I ended up coming back to my hometown in 19, or in 2017. Just four years ago, and it's the best thing I ever did. And you all know how great it is to live in this part of the country. And that's kind of what I'll be talking about this evening. To take advantage of the area we live in through a media center. I should mention that in Massachusetts, they have a really rich culture of public access television. You'll hear to it referred to as PEG television. P E G, Public Educational Governmental. And as I say, they have a really vibrant culture in Massachusetts. I was a member of my local station. I took the courses in editing and production. I shot some programs at my local church. And just about every town in Massachusetts has a public access station, not so much in North Carolina though. When I got here, really the last couple, couple of months, I would say probably six months ago, I started thinking about, about, more about this project and got a group together of people that are like-minded as me and who were active in the community. And we started talking about it and eventually things started to come together. Just to explain a little bit what we're doing here, public obviously talks about one or more channels on cable television that by law are reserved for non-commercial broadcasting by members of the public. This is where the citizens of Mills River and Henderson County become producers and directors. They produce their own programming. Anything you'd like. It's First Amendment TV. It's free speech television. If you want to do a show on gardening, if you want to do a show on your travels around the world, if you want to do a show, an interview show, if you want to talk about politics, anything you'd like to talk about is fair game on public access television. Educational television, as the name suggests, is primarily for educational institutions. There was an educational channel at Blue Ridge Community College for, for seven years from 2011 to 2018, but that no longer exists. The two aspects of this that I'm focusing on are public and governmental. We currently have a government channel, Channel 11 on Morris Broadband. I don't know if you looked at it recently. It leaves a lot to be desired, needs quite a bit of work, but I think that it's got great potential. The objective of this project basically are to start a studio, to outfit it with, with state of the art equipment. Um, to really get that government channel into shape. As I mentioned, these, these stations provide courses in directing and producing and editing. And that's what we would do. And then basically we, we create a full-service media center so that anyone in the county, anyone in Mills River who wanted to take advantage of it, if someone from Bull Rock or Sierra Nevada wanted to shoot a promotional video, they could come, use our equipment, use our drone, use our editing software, use our green wall, use our teleprompter. Things that they would really find it prohibitive to get on their own. We would have all of that equipment. The Alliance for Community Media, which is the trade group for PEG television, they had a, their annual convention two months ago. And the, the president of the organization asked, it was, it was virtual. It was not in person. It was virtual. And the president asked everyone that was on the call or on the meeting to, in one sentence, to state why or what they had done during the pandemic to impact positively their communities. And I picked out eight statements that I thought were particularly impactful. And, and you see them there on the screen. Basically, the pandemic has really been an opportunity for PEG television to step up and to show their thing. And of course, not only giving information to the public, public health information, but in many other ways, just bringing the community together in a time of really serious isolation that we've all gone through. I've visited five public access stations in the state, starting out with Chapel Hill, then Charlotte, Greensboro, Knightdale, and Manio. They're all, they're all doing a fantastic job. Two in particular, I'd like to talk a little more about are the ones in East Wake County. That's in Knightdale and the one in Dare County. They've, they've adopted a model that I'm going to be suggesting to you and the other four cities and towns in the county and also the county to adopt, which is basically they have entered into an interlocal agreement where they all agree that they will operate the station. They will produce the content. And by doing that, they're able to claim ownership of the, of the station, which becomes important in a couple of slides that I'm going to be coming up on in a second. All of the managers of those stations were very, very helpful to me, showed me around the stations. And they'd be happy to talk to any of you. They all indicated that if you wanted to give them a call, they'd be happy to tell you how well it works in their communities. Now, that's a little small, I know, but if you look on the left side of your packet, the three pages that are clipped together, you'll see a larger version. And basically I just wanted you to see what's going on in Dare County on a typical day. And just imagine that instead of Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, Nags Head, Manio, instead of that programming during the day, just imagine if it said Mills River, Flat Rock, Laurel Park, Hendersonville, and Fletcher, and Henderson County. This is a 24 hours a day station. This material is, is, is on 24 hours a day. And they have some great programming there. I saw some of it. I talked to the studio manager. And everyone participates, all the, all the towns in Dare County participate. It's a very active station. This is a government station and they have an educational station. They don't have a public access station. They have a government and educational. Basically, this all works because of the law in North Carolina. Prior to January 1st of 2007, it was a local franchising system. The county and the cities and towns were the ones that granted the franchise to the cable operator. And they would negotiate with the cable operator. Now we have a state franchising system, which is fairly simple to get a franchise. So you simply file some paperwork with the Secretary of State and you get your franchise, pay the fee. But of course, starting a state, starting a cable operation is much more complicated. But as far as just getting the franchise, it's not that, it's not that hard. But the, the way, the reason it works is that, as you see number two there, any city or town or county can, can ask and make a request of a, of a PEG station and they have, they have, the cable company has to grant that. But most importantly, number three is, this law in 2007 created a $4 million fund that's funded by the Video Programming Service Tax, which is a 7% tax on your cable bill. That $4 million fund is distributed among cable, among PEG operators in the state. In other words, they have a system where you certify your PEG channel. And what they do is they divide the number of certified PEG channels into $4 million. And that's the money, how the, how the money is distributed. What I'm going to be asking you tonight is to consider investing some of your coronavirus relief money into this community media center to help it get started. The, the two permitted uses of the money that are relevant for our purposes are to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. And I think the latter, the tourism, hot, travel and hospitality are particularly relevant here in Henderson County where we depend a lot on, on all three of those. But also equally important is another permitted use, which is to make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. It's my position and being a lawyer, I, I hope I can make a persuasive argument that broadband infrastructure includes a vibrant public access station and government access station in the form of this media center that we're proposing. The regulations that were issued on May 17th for the, for the, the Treasury Department are fairly broad. I've heard that, that, that cities and towns are struggling with how to interpret the law and how to spend the money, whether or not these, these uses are permitted that you're thinking of spending the money on. What I did is I, I sent to your manager a couple of hours ago, a publication that I had just come across, which is PEG Access Media Local Communications Hubs in a Pandemic. This is a study by American University about how PEG stations have, have acted during the pandemic. I would ask you, you should, hopefully, if you've gotten it already, you should have it on your, your inbox. And I'd ask you to take a look at that when, at, at your leisure. I think this document is your justification for spending 1% of your coronavirus relief money to help get this media center started. So I'd encourage you to read that when you can. The, the regulations are fairly, fairly liberal, I think. Recipients have considerable flexibility to use fiscal recovery funds to address diverse needs of their communities. And so you look at needs of Mills River and you decide, well, we, we could use a community media center here. That would be valuable to us for, for not only the citizens to spread their own messages, but also for the businesses we have in the, in the town to, to advertise their services and for people to stay connected. And for the next pandemic or the next public safety or public health emergency, whether it's a tornado or a flood or a fire or whatever, that we'll have the infrastructure in place to stay in touch with the community and, and communicate things that the community needs to know, which is what these stations have done during the pandemic. Okay, that's my understanding of the money that's going to be available under the American Rescue Plan. Mills River share, the last I saw was $2,170,000. I don't know if that's accurate. I hope it is. And you see the other, the other amounts from the other four municipalities and also the county. And again, what I'm asking is for one, for you to invest 1% of that money for Mills River, it would be $10,850 a year for two years to help us get this media center started. If everyone ships in their 1%, we can raise $166,000. And then it's up to us to go out and raise, raise the rest of the money that's necessary to get this thing off the ground. From the five stations I've talked to, their budgets were running between $250,000 to $350,000 a year to run their stations. And I don't see why it would be any different here in Henderson County. So what I'm asking for basically is that 1% investment, which will be a bridge to sustainable funding under the Video Programming Service Tax. And there is one page from the second quarter report from the North Carolina Department of Revenue. I know it's small, but there's also a copy of that in your material. It's a little easier to read. And that particular page is Dare County. And the reason I chose Dare County is because you can see the other counties, right above Dare County is Cumberland County where Fayetteville is. They have one, they claim one PEG channel. Dare County claims 10. And Dare County brings in a significant amount of money each year because of that. They tell me that money funds their station. They don't need to raise any, any other money. And I have every reason to expect that that would happen here in Henderson County. Dare raises $263,000. East Wake County, which is seven towns in East Wake County and John, and adjoining Johnston County, they bring in $368,000 through the Video Programming Service Tax. If we had two stations, a public access station and a government station, and we had all of the five cities and towns plus the county joining in to operate that station, we could claim 12 PEG channels, which would bring in almost $300,000 a year. That money is out there, available, ready to be distributed to any community that has a PEG channel. So your investment would really be the bridge to get to access that, that funding to sustain this media center for many years to come. That's a little small too, but that's in your materials. That simply is a breakdown of the number of PEG channels that Dare County, East Wake and Henderson County would have if we had two channels and six government entities owning those channels. And here are just some of the benefits. I think a lot of them are intuitive benefits to, to the county and to, into the towns in the county. It really, it really creates a connection, an unbelievable connection. And that's happened during the pandemic especially. And if, if you read the, when you read the report, you'll see that it's made a huge difference to these communities, the ones that have PEG stations. Second, from the bottom, a source of local news not carried on WLOS. Many communities have news, news programs. You could have Mills River today, a half an hour news program every, every week. Talking about what's happening in Mills River. Just the, the possibilities are unlimited. I particularly like that quote. It was from the Community Television Association of Maine, which really kind of sums up what, what PEG television is all about. And that's a quick run through what my group has been up to. All of that, all, all the things I talked about, obviously are on the slides that you have in your folder. There's some information on the right side about the station in Charlotte and also the station in Greensboro. Some forums that show you how fairly simple it is to to sign people up for membership and also to, to produce the programming. Well, it's not, it's not simple to produce the programming, but, but it, it's it's user friendly, I guess I would say, for, for the community. So I just want to thank you for, for the time that I have today and, and hope that you'll give us a lot of serious thought. Ask me questions either tonight or send me a, shoot me an email or give me a phone call. And I hope you agree with me that it's, it's a good idea and it's something that would be a huge benefit to Mills River and to the rest of Henderson County. Any questions that I could answer?
Yeah, I've got a question. Um, hey, Bruce. Nice to see you. I'm trying to connect the dots in my brain. You mentioned that there's a cable service company tax.
Right.
And you mentioned something about $4 million.
Right.
Is that the money that's then distributed out to various PEG stations across the state?
Right, every quarter, it's distributed to what they call certified PEG channels. And they have to certify the channels by July 15th of each year. So that's, it's a, I'm glad you asked that because we are, we're not under, under the gun time-wise, but there is a timeline that we need to meet. Because if we can get this station up and running 90 days in fiscal year 2022, which is a requirement to access the, that $4 million fund. If we can do that, we can then begin to get the quarterly payments. But that would mean we'd have to start the station by March 15th in order to have 90 days before June, June 30th. There's 15 day cushion there, but. So I'm hopeful that over the next months, I can have discussions with all of you, all of the other government officials and, and also in the county to try to bring this together. If you go on the website for Dare County, their station, current TV is, you can just Google current TV, you'll see their interlocal agreement. And I, I sent a copy, I sent copies to Daniel, so he has those. They're, they're fairly straightforward, not too complicated. Basically says that we all agree to come together and operate these stations and to provide content. Under the statute that's, that set up state franchising in 2007, that agreement allows them to claim PEG channels. Each municipality can claim all the channels. So Mills River could claim two channels. Hendersonville claims two channels. Fletcher claims two channels. So there'd be a total of 12 channels. And you'd get whatever, however many channels there are for that year. Right now it's 152. That was the last certification was 152 channels. So you divide 152 into 4 million and that's about $25,000 a year per channel. And that money's out there available.
Okay, so, um, okay, that helps a lot. That helps me understand. So there's $4 million annually that's, that's dedicated to PEG programming.
Correct.
And there are 152 channels across the state.
Currently.
Currently.
Obviously, if we added 12, that would reduce everyone's share.
Right. And so you project that if, if we were to claim the channels, like the community was to claim these channels, there would be 296,200 there would be $296,200, $296,296.
Correct.
Annually that would, that would come down to the community to support the station.
The department revenue issues that checks quarterly. And the statute said they go to the town, but the town has to forward them to the peg operator within 30 days.
So really, what you need is just the funds to get started. And then once it's started, this thing is pretty much self-sustaining. Is that, is that right?
Once it's started, it'll be self-sustaining based on this $4 million fund. But I, I would also hope that we could raise other money in the community, in the county from companies, manufacturers in the county, from, from businesses in the county, memberships from people that, you know, produce programming, modest fee for that membership, $25 maybe. It's not uncommon to have, similar to what PBS does, to have underwriting of programs. You could have Sierra Nevada could underwrite programs. So it's a lot of possibilities. But I, I don't think it's fair to ask all of you for money unless we get out there and try to raise some too. But I'm, I'm reluctant to do that until I get the nod from all of you, from all, from all the governments in the county. But I, I will say that you, you are my fifth presentation. I've done all the municipalities now. The reaction's been very positive. We have not received any negative reaction at all. There's some questions raised about how can we be sure this complies with the Treasury's regulations? Again, if you'd read that, I think you'll be satisfied that it does.
Brian? Is that nowhere in your presentation did I see how many subscribers to cable are there in Henderson County plus Mills River? Is that, is that at my house, I kicked cable out 25 years ago.
Right.
So you're asking for money that I wouldn't even get to see the channels?
Well, that's an excellent point, and I'm so glad you asked that because people have said, well, with people cutting the cord, as they say, and, and not using cable, is this really the best time to be asking for money for this kind of project? Well, the fact is, all of the station managers that I've talked to, all the five stations I've visited, said that they have a very active Facebook presence. They have a very active YouTube presence. They have a very active website presence. They stream videos from their website. If you look at the channel 11, and you wouldn't, but those of you that have Morris broadband, if you look at channel 11, current channel 11, it's pretty, it's not much there, but if you look at Dare County's government channel, it will blow you away what, what you'll see on that and the opportunity. So if someone has access to the internet, they can take advantage of everything I'm talking about. They don't have to have cable TV.
The, the other point I want to make is that we tried to do this 15 to 20 years ago. It didn't work out. I was only a committee that tried to get Morris to go through with this process. And so we was doing, we had all these meetings and so forth. And so nothing happened. So my question is, what is different than the now minus the stimulus money?
What's different is, is the state franchising law in 2007, that changed the whole landscape. So you don't have to negotiate with Morris broadband anymore. There are no more negotiations. I cited the statute in my material, so if you want to look at the statute, if you, if you ask Morris broadband for a channel, if you meet the certain population requirements for the county or for the municipality, they have to assign you a channel. Now, it might be channel 1096 way up in the spectrum, whereas you'd much rather have a 10, 11 or 12, which we have now. But they have to do it. There is no more negotiation.
So is that the stimulus money? So is that if 10 or 30% or wherever the magic number of participants have cable in a town of Mills River, is that before I would allocate any money, I'd want to know that it's more like 80 or 90% of the, the residents of Mills River getting cable?
I think what's, what's, what's the more important inquiry is how many residents of Mills River have smart TVs? How many residents of Mills River have broadband? How many residents of Mills River have computers? Because they can see it on all those platforms. Yes, they can see it on their TV, but they can see it on their laptop. They can see it on their smartphone. They can see it on anything they can see social media on. But you, you, you raise some good points and, and I think those are things we have to talk about. One thing you made me think of was people have asked me, well, can you give us the viewership of cable T, of, of public access peg television? Can you give us so statistics? And you can't because the cable companies will not release that information. It's proprietary. It will be really interesting to see how many people are watching peg television in the communities that have peg television. But we can't, they just won't release those figures because it's proprietary. But I'm hoping that with a new cable provider in town, that they will jump on board this, this idea as a good citizen. So we'll see.
Yeah, one other question for you, Bruce. There are a lot of channels and I'm thinking like the, the local news stations and that sort of thing, ABC, NBC, that you can access on Morris broadband, but you can also access if you've got a television antenna on your television. Do, do you have any plans to broadcast over the airwaves? So that people who don't subscribe to cable television might be able to access?
No, it's my understanding, I'm not a, I'm not a technical guy, but my understanding is that you're talking cable, traditional social media platforms, Facebook, YouTube and those type of platforms.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next we have a nonprofit request from Mills River Life Enrichment Center, Merloc. Ruth Williams.
Thank y'all for giving me a moment to speak. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Mills River Life Enrichment Center, also known as Oh, you're fine. No, you're fine. Known as Merloc, and we are a senior adult outreach program for the community, for the senior adults who are aging at home. It's been operating since 2007. And just to clarify some information that Jim was sharing, there's one paid employee, which is myself. And I have become full-time over the years as the ministry's grown, my responsibilities have grown. And so, you know, that's just par for the course. And we have 26 dedicated volunteers. 13 of those have been there since 2007. So that shows you the passion that they have for what we do. We are truly committed to promoting healthy aging and assisting in meeting the emergent needs, emerging needs of our seniors. So many times, senior adults are just forgotten by their family, by their friends, by the community. Just everybody. And often they are devalued in this society that is so focused on youthful lifestyles. Youth are very important. They're our future, but we would not be here without our senior adults who came before. They are very valuable because they, they have wisdom that comes from living. And that's something that you have to earn and gain. Many of our senior adults who age at home are lonely. And due to the isolation of COVID, it has just skyrocketed. We spent 10 years pulling them out of their house and now for two, well, for a year and a half, we've told them to stay home. And it, it can affect them physically, cognitively in so many ways. And it is, it's not healthy at all. After months of isolation, we have reopened Merloc. There are restrictions. And the restrictions are in place to, to be as safe and healthy as we can. Many of these precautions have been made and we've had pretty good attendance that has come back. We still have some who are afraid and we understand that, but we do stay in touch. With all the necessary precautions that we've had to make, it has increased our expenses to do the programs each week. And right now, Grant, I write grants all the time and that they are just decreasing for senior adults every day. At this time, I would like to request of the town of Mills River in the amount of $10,000, this funding would ensure the place of fellowship, health, education, entertainment and nutritious meals for the senior adults in their community. According to the Mills River survey that was taken in recent years, Merloc is exactly what the senior adults in Mills River have been asking for. Merloc was established to help aging people at home continue to stay home. And that is really important to a lot of them. I appreciate your consideration and I hope you will take time to read over the information that I sent you and I am happy to answer any questions.
So being one of these elderly people is that roughly? Don't be exact, but what is the average age of these people? Plus, are they, do they tend to be Mills River residents or are they coming from within the church? You know what I mean?
Okay, let me, let me clear something up really fast. So many people think this is a Mills River Methodist program. Merloc is independent. We are our own 501(c)(3). We have been blessed to have the facility to meet at the Mills River, Mills River Methodist Church. The pastor there did start it in 2007, but like I said, as we grew, things have changed and we are independent from the church. So very few people who attend the church attend Merloc. It's been that way all through. However, a lot of my volunteers are members of the church. So that, that's kind of the correlation there. We do not check IDs when you enter. So is, most people have to be retired because we meet at 10 o'clock in the morning. So, you know, you can't hold a full-time job and come to Merloc too. But it's, we have, one of our attendees is 101 and then I have some that are in their early 60s. So it's yeah, so we won't check your ID. So the age is very Roger. I mean, it's mostly for retirees, a lot, a lot of widows, you know, who've lost their spouse. They're very lonely. Their whole life has changed because, you know, they don't have their life partner anymore. We have a few widowers and then we actually have some couples that come. So it's a mixture. Does that answer?
Hi Ruth. I just wanted to thank you for attaching your tax information. It's very useful for us to see that you are a certified nonprofit and that you do have 501(c)(3) status.
We work very hard for that.
And I, I will tell you that there is a, a group countywide that from all municipalities that have government officials who are looking at ways to, to spend this American Relief Plan money. So while I wouldn't necessarily expect action tonight.
I understand.
I can tell you that there are a number of us who are sorting through and trying to find the best way and we're still awaiting a lot of guidance.
I understand that too. I do.
So, but it's, it's coming. And I think, I think at the end of the day, we'll have a pretty good idea of how to spend the money that's, that's coming from the river.
And also I did, I don't think I mentioned this. Before we could reopen, we did a drive-through lunch, which actually was super fun. We as volunteers and employees enjoyed it. Plus it got the seniors out of the house, gave them a safe place to drive through. We had books and puzzles and magazines that we could give them and they got a lunch. And we got to actually see them, talk to them to make sure they were doing okay. And if by some horrible reason that we get shut down again, that will go back into place. That will continue. You know, just because COVID's back, or I guess it never really went away, but just if it ramps back up, we will still be active in keeping, trying to get them out of the house just a little bit and, and keep in contact to meet their needs.
Well, I think the work you're doing is extremely important. I applaud you for it.
Well, I, it's the passion. It's, I love my senior adults. And anytime y'all have a thirsty morning, come and see what we do. We'd love to have you. And we won't check your ID, I promise. Any other questions? Thanks for your time and I hope that, you know, things will work out for all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jay?
Yes.
Is that we're going to start, Daniel, is that we're going to start getting requests for the stimulus money? Can, can we? And I don't want to call it rules, procedures and so forth. But is it, you know what I mean? Is it?
Yeah, I know what you mean. And, and what we've been talking about internally and what I've sort of been game planning is having sort of a mini visioning session this fall, maybe in October to give us some time to prepare. Wherein we set some boundaries, not necessarily who's going to get funded, but we're going to allocate X amount to nonprofits and X amount to whatever, and X amount to something else. And I think that would really be a good use of everyone's time because you're right, we will begin to get more and more requests as this money becomes available. So that's, that's my plan for it. I'm happy to entertain any questions or anything else you might have, but that's, that's what I think is best, most appropriate.
Has the county's committee met yet?
We have met once. And it wasn't a terribly productive meeting. I, I think just because everybody's still awaiting this guidance, which is, has been promised to us by the end of the month.
Is that, is that, I'm like Brian Caskey. Is that Ruth, I've known you a long time. But I appreciate you saying that you're a, was it a nonprofit? And so personally, that's what I'm looking for. And so is that maybe Daniel, is that instead of reinventing the wheel? Is that, you know, maybe get the nonprofit's number or, or, or something? Is it, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we need to come up with a process and again, some boundaries that council's comfortable with. And then we can kind of push that out to the public and say, if you qualify, we want to hear from you and come with, you know, your application or whatever that request might look like. And just for the benefit of everyone who may not be as familiar with this, the, the Treasury Department at the federal level put out what they call an interim final, final rule back in May. And so it's the final rule in its interim form. And so they're taking feedback now. They have been since they published it. So we have a general understanding of what we can do with the funds, but it's not a final rule yet. So everyone I think is a little bit hesitant to to kind of commit to doing a whole lot until that rule's been finalized. And to reiterate Councilman Caskey's comments, we've been told that will be coming really any day now, by the end of August. So we're, we're sort of in a strained holding pattern at the moment. You're welcome.
Okay, item C on tonight's agenda is the Riverbank Restoration Bid Responses.
Want to get up?
Yeah.
A little presentation. Just before I get started on that, if it's okay, Mayor, I would like to must you know, we got a lot of rain in the last week and a half and we did have some park damage, which goes right along with this Riverbank Restoration Project. So I'm going to show you guys a little bit about some of the damage that we had. And then I will talk a little more about the bid response. Alright, so for a couple of days, we renamed the town Mills Lake instead of Mills River. That is the, the back walking trail area. We got a pretty substantial amount of rain that night and it definitely flooded our entire back section of the park. Wasn't on. Yeah, I've got it. I think it wasn't on. So this was the morning after the flood. You can see we lost some trash cans, our doggy box stations. And it took a very long time for the water to go down. Normally it's very quick process through here. But as you'll see later, we had a massive log jam at the Hooper Lane Bridge, which essentially dammed up the river, making our water very high. There's Hooper Lane under there. This is our back walking trail. You see the river just walking through. There it goes. You can kind of see here how high the water got. You can see there was debris well up almost to the top of the fishing pier. Right there. Yeah. Yeah. Um, that's our new swinging bench. The, the bench itself held strong. So Dale's concrete worked really good underneath, but unfortunately we lost a lot of the, the stonework, so we'll have to get that fixed. Okay. Click on to the next one. Um, that was the two days later. That's still what our, our trail looked like. It took a very long time for the water to get down. Um, if you look up our kiosk, um, the water was probably about four and a half feet of that kiosk. You can see the water line. Um, it was well above the picnic table. We had river rocks sitting on the picnic table from where it drained through the picnic table. Right, click on to the next one. Um, that is the, the back parking lot um, at, at the boat launch. We lost a substantial amount of gravel. Um, so we still have that closed. Um, had a lot of debris cleaned up. You can click on to the next one and that is the dam uh, under uh, Hooper, Hooper Lane Bridge and that I think was a cause of a lot of our damage. It was massive. I have seen many log jams under that bridge and that was by far the most substantial log jam I have seen there. Um, DOT did come and finish cleaning that up today. They did a phenomenal job getting here quickly. Um, and in a timely manner to take care of that. It was actually a crew out of Fayetteville. They've had people come from all over the state to help with the cleanup in the area. Okay, click. Um, and then here's just a little um, uh, thing summary of the park damage. So we've had 100 feet of walking trail that was destroyed. Um, you can see there where it literally the ground washed out from underneath it and it has sunk. Um, as of today, we do have the rest of the walking trail open except for that 100 feet. So people can kind of do a, a C. You just can't make that full loop right now. Uh, we lost four tra- trash cans, two doggy pots. Uh, we lost all the gravel in our picnic area, gravel in our parking lot, um, that stone pad underneath our swinging bench. Um, the, the big log jam at the Hooper Lane Bridge. Um, and then we just had a ton of removal of silt and debris that we had to take care of. And I just want to give a shout out to my staff who did an amazing job, but in a ton of hours to, to try to get everything cleaned up as best we can. Um, so um, with that, just as you all know, um, we had a lot of damage. We're still, it's going to be a process to finish cleaning it up. Um, I think the only thing left, as I said, is the Hooper Lane parking lot is still closed and the boat launch, um, we just have not had time to dig it out yet. Um, so we're still assessing damage there. Um, I'm hoping to get um, next week, we're going to try to cut out the section of asphalt that's damaged. We're going to try to repack some dirt in and lay gravel so we can at least have a temporary loop that we can do. Um, I did meet with engineer, uh, Tom Jones and hopefully at our next meeting, we'll have a better plan for a permanent fix for that. Um, but that will be a little bit of a process. Um, and my recommendation is to not do that fix until after the Riverbank Restoration Project is complete. So that way we don't spend the money and then potentially have another flood event that could ruin uh, the investment in the fix. So with that, um, if anybody have any questions about flood damage or any, you know?
Tom give you an estimate yet or?
He has not. He, I met with him on Tuesday, so he said he would work on that and I will let you know as soon as I get it. Okay, um, so with that, um, as um, you know, must be we were here, but so back in 2019, we had a flood and I said, ooh, we're, we're going to lose that walking trail if we don't do something about it pretty soon. And so we applied for a grant with um, North Carolina Division of Water Quality, um, for a Water Resources Development Grant. Um, but unfortunately we, we were issued that grant, but due to state budgets, they did not um, authorize that money until January of this year. So this um, this spring, we've been um, doing engineering work, permitting work. And this July, we did put that project out to bid. Um, so um, we did receive three bid responses for that, uh, with the lowest bidder being Baker Grading and landscaping with a bid of $114,000, 914, $977,050. This was a little over our estimated budget. We, you know, we planned this project back in 2019. We know construction costs have gone up pretty significantly since then. Um, if you want to go to the next slide, I think I have a, I know you guys have a copy of the, the budget, but I just wanted um, to point out to you, you know, that we had $150,000 um, in the capital expense project with this construction cost. We were expecting that new, that new cost of the project to be $165,265,050 um, this year and just note that does include a 5% contingency on that. And then just to review, um, uh, we did receive, you know, the $75,000 grant um, from uh, North Carolina Division of Water Resources. We also received an additional $20,000 grant um, from the Henderson County Community Foundation to do this work. Um, and if you all um, decide to allow us to sign the contract and move forward with this project, we also, there's a stipulation in the grant contract that if you go over budget, you can request additional funding up to 25% of the total cost. So I'm estimating that we could potentially apply for another $19,000 in reimbursement. That is not a guarantee. Basically what they do is um, with the current year's budget, whatever awards they grant, if there's money left over, current projects that are happening, if there's money left, they say yay or nay. Um, but I, I certainly think it's worth a shot. Um, does anyone, I guess, have any questions on the Riverbank project? I think our engineer Greg Jennings with Environmental, Jennings Environmental is on here. So if you had any technical questions about the project, or if you had any other questions for me, I'm happy to answer. Um, but uh, you know, we are recommending, I have checked references with Baker Grading. Um, they've done a lot of projects in the area. They're at Old Fort. Um, they've done projects in Hendersonville with the Biltmore State, um, Black Mountain and they have seen uh, gotten very good reviews from the folks I've contacted for reference.
What's the timeline expected?
Um, we cannot begin the project until November 15th due to permitting. There's a endangered bat that you can't disturb. Um, so before, so it won't happen before November 15th and we have given them a deadline of March 1st. So um, and part of that is very well planned that, that's our slower time in the park. We want to try to have less impact on the people that come out here and walk. Uh, it's also when the river tends to be the lowest that we don't get as many, you know, it's after hurricane season and before some heavy spring rains. So.
So we've already committed to the 150. You're just asking for 16.
And just permission to sign the co- to sign the contract. So if you all would um, Sue can give you the proper words of what you would need to say, give the town manager permission to sign the contract and any all documents related to the execution of the Riverbank Restoration Project. Is that?
Can you explain the uh, the uh, monies that you said about the grant could be extended?
Yeah.
Or expanded?
There's, as a part of the grant contract, there's a stipulation in there saying that basically for situations like this, if you end up over budget, there was unexpected circumstances, you can request money. Um, so that would also be, uh, I would need your permission to be able to ask for that money essentially. So um, if that is something you would like to, to do, I would.
And that would have been in the tune of how much?
Um, I thi- on this current estimate, it's about $19,000 that we could request.
So if, if you were able to secure that money and that's a nail, we wouldn't be over budget on this project at all then, right?
You still have to pay it out. So that's with, so yeah, with the 150 that was allocated for this project, we have to pay all of that out and we will get reimbursed $75,000. We can ask to be reimbursed for an additional $19,000 and you know, we may or may, you know, depending on if we have the money, we may or may get that.
So, so if we do this project, would it have eliminated what went on in the last couple of weeks?
Would, I believe our walking path would have been saved if we had this project done. And so I think it's extra important now before we spend the money to fix it, that we go ahead, do this project, reinforce that bank. I mean, if you have technical questions, I know Greg Jennings is on here about how exactly that will help, but um, that bank has just been slowly eroding and getting closer and closer to our path. And a huge part of this project is to do what's called a reventment. Um, just basically build a wall of logs and then re- basically completely restructure the bank um, in that curve. And then they'll also put in what's called a boulder vein, which will help divert the water around that curve. So that way it just doesn't keep eating and eating away.
Uh, is that? This is a theoretical question. Do you foresee? Is that you never can keep the water in the banks, no matter what you do? So is that, do you foresee us doing the whole bank around the curve and so forth at some point in time? Is it, does that make sense? Is it?
Greg, are you there? Can you hear us and maybe?
Yes, can you hear me, Nicole?
We can. You're a little quiet.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
And it's ver- it's a very good question and I will say that we've studied the entire park boundary within the property that's owned by the town and we are addressing in this project, all of the high stress bank areas within the park. And so there would not be the need for a future project on town property. There is a need for projects on other properties which are private, uh, but this project will protect the town property.
Are you, so we lost you for a minute, Greg. Are you still there?
Uh, yes. This project will address all of the town property where the high stresses are. Did you catch that, Nicole?
I think so. Do you still have questions? And, and just a reminder, we also already did the fishing pier, which was also one of the higher area concerns. We did that project last year in partnership with the Wildlife Commission. Um, those were definitely our two hot areas. And just a reminder, this isn't going to stop water from coming in. There's no way we're going to ever do that, but it will protect our assets and prevent us from future high costs of repair. Correct.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we authorize the town manager to sign any and all documents related to the project. And that we also give staff authorization to request additional funds from the North Carolina DWR. I will, I will second.
Or other places that they might seem fit by getting a grant.
Sure, sounds great.
Brian, second. All right, others in favor of pursuing our streammaker restoration, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, item D is to set the public hearing date for text amendment TXT 21-03, Certificate of Understanding for October 14th.
Evening council. So at the June 24th council meeting, uh, council directed staff to draft the text amendment to remove the certificate of understanding with owner signature requirement uh, for the subdivision ordinance for all final subdivision plaques. We brought this to the planning board meeting at their August 17th meeting. They voted unanimously to recommend denial. The next step is obviously to set a public hearing date for consideration before this council uh, with staff schedules, council schedules, upcoming public hearings, uh, and considering our notice requirements, we're proposing a public hearing date of October 14th. Happy to answer any questions.
I'll make a motion. We set a public hearing for October 14th for this text man. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right, item E, Resolution 2021-11, adopting the Henderson County Animal Ordinance, which we spoke, discussed at last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the resolution before you this evening is uh, very similar to the resolution that we discussed at your last meeting a couple of weeks ago. The last resolution that we presented combined the Animal Control Ordinance and Noise Ordinance into one resolution. We separated those two at council's request. And so Resolution 21-11 uh, is only referencing the county's animal control ordinance. And this uh, essentially states that the town would be adopting the county's ordinance and any amendments there too. Um, for the, sort of authorizing the county to enforce this ordinance within the town's corporate limits.
This is not really changing anything because the sheriff's department was already enforcing and control ordinance in Town Mills River anyway, right?
So they, they have been doing it for a long time. Uh, and then this year, we've been approached by the sheriff's office basically to get a new resolution, an up-to-date resolution before the the county commissioners to, I guess, sort of renew that authority, if you will. But yes, they have been doing it up to this point.
I would like to, uh, on the resolution, item number three, where it says the town of Mills River agrees to the adoption of any future amendments, modifications, or changes made to this ordinance. I would like to strike that from the resolution. Um, and you know, we would readdress those as they come up. That way we have knowledge of that before the county makes a change and then we don't know it and then they're out enforcing something that we may not agree with.
Also is that, has the county, is that, I'm fine with this, with, with Brian's changes. Has the county been approached, is that? Are we going to have to pay? Well, my first question is that, has the county been approached with this proposed resolution? And B, is that, is it going to cost us some more money with our current sheriff's contract?
The, this request came from the county that we adopt a new resolution. Um, so we just basically put together what was adopted in 2011 and I, I can't speak for them, but their attorney wanted us to adopt a more recent resolution with the same language. So that's, that's the first answer. The second answer is no, it's not going to cost the town any more money. That contract is, is what it is for this year and it won't affect anything.
So I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2021-11 with the modification of striking item three. I will second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you got that, Sue? Yeah, I'll re- I'll resign it. Okay, item F, Resolution 2021-12, asking Henderson County to enforce no reverse noise ordinance.
Similar to the previous item on the agenda, this Resolution 21-12 is requesting that the county, excuse me, that the Henderson County Sheriff's Office enforced the Mills River noise ordinance. Um, and this again was part of the right, resolution combined with the animal resolution. We've separated the two. So this one is dealing specifically with the noise ordinance.
So were they, they being the county, were they okay with the changes that we made the last time? Whenever this came before us, because there was difference. The last, yeah, the last time we had this ordinance or this uh, ordinance before us that, that the one to shade the sun. There was four lines, I think, four different, four specific lines. And that's come down to, what I'm asking is, is Mills River ordinance going to supersede anything in the county?
Whether this is written, yes. It would be only be the, the town's noise ordinance that would be authored, authorized for enforcement.
And the county is okay with us making this change?
I've not spoken to the county specifically about that change. We were going off the direction we got from, from council, which was to enforce the the town's ordinance instead of the county's ordinance.
Jim, from your opinion is, from your standpoint, is this clear or is this confusing or clear as mud?
So the only ordinance the town of Mills River currently has, to my understanding, is amplified noise only. It does not address any other noise issues within the town limits of Mills River. So basically what it would be, would be Mills River adopting or asking for the county's noise, noise ordinance to be adopted to include superseding the hour restrictions for the amplified noise ordinance within the town limits for those to be addressed, but then to handle everything else we've been handling off of the county's ordinance. Does that, does that explain it?
Question, Jim?
Yes, sir.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Yes, sir.
Yes, you are, but go ahead.
But that's fine. Suck it up. Is that, so if my, in, in the garage. So if my radio is playing too loud, what we have currently would not address that because it's not amplified music. So the amplified music addressed were venues like Mills River Brewery and that sort of thing. That amplified does not include your radio in a garage, or you beating and banging on your car, working on your car out in your garage at one or two o'clock in the morning and creating a problem for neighbors, uh, barking dogs, um, revving engines, that sort of thing. The county ordinance, which we also need to have adopted, like we did the animal ordinance, would address those concerns, which we've been doing all along. And then you put on top of that the amplified, which is simply specifically addressed for the larger venues for the hour restrictions, weekdays versus weekends. Is that, Daniel, is that? Didn't, when, was there some talk about a zoning administrator going out after hours? You know, checking on Bold Rock?
Yep.
Is that, do I remember that correctly?
That's correct, and we have, we have applications pending. I was just waiting to see how this conversation shook out before we got somebody in that position.
So I have a question, just clarification. On the exhibit A, which is the, our ordinance, and I just wanted, so under one fifty-two dot twenty-two prohibited noises, line item A says disturbing noises, which is perceived by a person of ordinary sensibilities as interrupting normal peace and calm of the area. And then B says, and reasonably loud noise, which is a level of noise that is substantially incompatible with the time and location where created, to the extent that it creates an actual or imminent interference with peace or good order. That doesn't apply just to people who have amplified music. That's across the whole town, correct?
That's right.
So that would cover residential?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if Roger's playing his radio, then these two line items of that, of our resolution would cover that.
Yeah, and so would item C, and it specifically references radio phonographs or the musical instruments.
Phonographs.
Roger still has one.
If anyone's going to have one, it'd be Roger.
A record player, yes, not a phonograph.
So is that, this would not apply to some type of emergency?
No.
So is that, if a tree failed blocking the driveway, is that, I can get out there with my chainsaw and I wouldn't get visited by the noise police? Okay.
And the same would go for any other emergencies, emergency services, of course, you know, nothing to restrict that at all.
Yeah, but it's not a phonograph. Alexander Graham Bell had a phonograph. Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty-two-one dash twelve, the Mills River Noise Ordinance. I'll second, whichever one.
All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? All right, uh, item G, the Powellville Policy.
The Powellville Policy was presented to you at your last meeting, and what this is, is a policy that will guide council in making decisions about investments in streets, rights of ways, things of that nature. The first several pages, um, basically pages one through uh, towards the end of, end of, uh, the bottom of page five are straight from the state's guidance on how funding can be spent. Um, so at the last meeting, there was a couple of questions about specifically council's authority as the deciding body about what roads are accepted, and so we had the town's attorney review this policy, and there were a couple of misspellings that she caught, but the substantial changes are on page eight of the, of the policy under second H. And I'll just read it for the benefit of the public. All decisions regarding the process for submitting a petition for road dedication and acceptance of new roads shall be within the sole discretion of town council and consultation with the town attorney. So in that sentence, we added the word within and discretion instruct responsibility. Um, and that was, that was a specific request from council was to make sure that it was crystal clear that town council was, was the authority on this. Uh, and then under number two, there were a couple of pre-wordings. All owners that abut a street in question shall petition the town and write in to take over the streets. Any street without one hundred percent approval of all abutting owners will not be considered by town council. And then a couple, a couple of misspellings on the back page. It, the last sentence, number three, the town reserves the right to refuse acceptance of any street. That did say maintenance of streets, which in judgment require, will require extensive repair. But this gives the town full authority, full right to refuse acceptance of any street, uh, whatever reason seems fit. So again, the only changes were ins- insertions and corrections by the town attorney on that last section.
Is this a policy, I, I know it's, but is it actually becoming ordinance within our town codes, or how does that work?
It, it could be, if that's what council desire, but this is just a policy that we're proposing that the town adopt that we would use for, for budgeting purposes, and when we get requests from the public.
So Brian's guardrail project around Butler Bridge, is that, that is a perfect example of getting pal money back, is that right?
We could, so the way that worked was that the town initiated their request, and DOT put together a municipal agreement, which is normal for when municipalities ask for things like this. And the town did a budget amendment to pay for out of this fund balance, to give that money to the state to do that work. With pal bill funding, that is also an option. We would have to do a municipal agreement with the state stating that they are going to be responsible for maintenance once it's in, in the ground. Um, so yes, pal bill money could be used for projects like that in the future, uh, even on state roads.
So can we claim that twenty-eight thousand dollars? You know where I'm headed. Can we click?
I thought we asked that before, we were told no. Yeah.
Yeah, we can't reimburse ourselves for that.
We were not in program.
No.
But if we done something like that in the future, that's okay.
I'm okay.
And I just wanted to point out, this is standard DOT language, uh, a- and we encountered a, an issue at the last tech meeting, specifically where they had a, a number of property owners who wanted to have their road be taken over for state maintenance, and all of the property owners didn't agree. So, uh, I, I approve of this language, and I think it's, it's perfectly reasonable, matches up with everything that I'm familiar with, so. Uh, you need a motion from us to approve this, please? So what's the, what's the specific language?
Yes, adopt the policy.
So I'll make a motion that we, the town of Mills River adopts the pal bill policy that we have in front of us.
And I will second that.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item H on the agenda, our volunteer committees and boards. Okay, first we have to take a break. Five minutes. Okay, back to our volunteer committees and boards discussion item. It's pretty thick.
So this item has been, um, on the agenda a couple of times the last several months, and one of the directions that we got early on was to develop a, a charter for the various boards and committees. And so we've done that, um, starting with the planning board, uh, and the planning board in particular, because a lot of their, their responsibilities are already laid out kind of in state law and local ordinance. So it wasn't a whole lot of creativity, if you will, on, on putting this together. Uh, we did borrow some language from, uh, the city of Hendersonville, and the planning board has its own rules of procedure adopted several years ago, and we pulled from that as well to kind of keep some of what was originally in place. Uh, and so what you have this evening are a couple of different things. One is the, the general policy for all boards and committees that council adopted, uh, back in nineteen and, uh, the year twenty-twenty, and then you have the draft, um, charter and rules of procedure for the planning board, which goes very in-depth about board's purpose, what its responsibilities are, the membership voting. Most of what you would need to be able to just walk into a planning board meeting and run it if you're a new, new chairperson, for example. Uh, and so the intent with drafting this the way it is, is that it can be modified to fit the rest of the boards and committees, so we could have one for the Board of Adjustment, Parks and Recreation, and then Board of Adjustment would be your other one. For Board of Adjustment, again, it'd be fairly straightforward because much of their responsibilities are laid out in state law and in local ordinance. So that's what we have before you this evening. Um, we're not requesting any specific action, other than if you have some feedback about the layout of this or any questions about it. And if you're satisfied with it, we can move forward with the other groups, uh, or we can entertain any other discussion you might have this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
I got one question, uh, or attachment A. That's the existing policy. B is a draft to replace A?
No.
No.
Attachment A is its own policy.
Okay, so it stays?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a general procedure for all the rules, or excuse me, all the boards. Attachment B is what's proposed, and this would replace, uh, I believe it's attachment C. D, yes.
So on, on attachment B, the first bullet point says, this is for the planning board, says prepare and from time to time amend and revise a comprehensive and coordinated plan for the physical development of the town. So is that, if I read that, is that, can we put? So going back to the first sentence, time amend and revised a proposed comprehensive. Because is that, if you, is that, if you look at it, it's, is that, I take it that the planning board can amend and revise a comprehensive and coordinated plan.
Right, so you want to, you wanted to be clear that the board can propose amendments or revisions to the plan, is that right? Okay. Yeah, I like, I like propose, I think that, that makes sense.
I have one on section three, under attendance. I have one on section three, under attendance, and this is just a. A discussion on. I feel for, to miss three consecutive board meetings on the planning board, that's a big deal. I would be more inclined to see that dropped to. I don't know what the rest of council feels about that.
Oh, way behind. Something like that.
I agree. If you want to make a motion or change.
Since we're just on a draft here.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You guys.
I was in the wrong article.
Okay, alright.
So replace absent for three consecutive meetings with absent for two consecutive meetings, is that right?
That would be my proposed change if the rest of council is in agreement with it.
Can we, can we put something like excused or? I mean, is that?
It says, I think it still says that the chairperson of the board may give a member an exception to the attendance requirement with good cause.
So like COVID would be a good cause.
Yes.
Two meetings because whatever else.
Like no shows.
Yeah.
No shows or, yeah.
So not, I'm trying to make it complicated, but can the chairman give Roger? An excuse for not showing up? Is that, who is that? I like the idea about the excused absences, because people got stuff going on in their lives and so forth. So is that my thinking, if Roger's on the planning board and he calls the chairman and says, you know. Gail done this, or Gail, or I'm in the hospital, whatever. Is that?
If I just clarify, standard practice right now is that they have to, they have to contact the chairman prior to the meeting in order for it to be excused. So it can't be after the fact, unless somebody says, oh, by the way, I was in the emergency room.
I mean, to belabor the point, but are we dropping the two absences? Everybody go with that, okay.
So Daniel, as a thought to, to use this as a template for the other committees as well.
Yes.
I got one more question, sorry. Yeah. Article five, section eight. Subcategory B. Towards the end of that, it says, request for such placement on the agenda must be made in writing to either the chairperson or zoning administrator. His doesn't need no less than fifteen days prior to the date of the scheduled meeting. So let me just make sure I understand that, so if anybody wants to put an item on the agenda, they have to present that to the chairman fifteen days prior to the date of the scheduled meeting.
This is different than if someone had an application pending. This would just be if. I'll use Jim, even though he's a member of the planning board, let's pretend he's not. If, if he, if he wants to discuss public access television, for example, he would need to contact either the zoning administrator or the chairperson. At least fifteen days in advance to be able to get on the agenda for that upcoming meeting.
So with that being said, agendas and items on the agenda should be set pretty well in advance of the meeting. So would it be fair to say that we could put a rule in here that the packets for the meetings have to be delivered to the boards one week prior to the meeting?
Sure.
Since we're, since we're expanding this out to fifteen days, and that would give board members a week before their meeting to actually review it and have all that stuff in hand. Would that be a fair?
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've been working towards that.
I know you guys have, yes, the planning board has said everything's been going much smoother, so I appreciate that. But I would, I'd like to go ahead and if we could, if everybody else is okay with that, then that way there's some guideline to know what's going on. So I don't know if that needs to be like item D, that, you know, meeting packets for committees should be delivered one week ahead of the meeting time or something like that.
Yeah.
However you want to phrase that.
I think that's what we'll do is add a letter D, and just say the packets are to be delivered no less than seven days prior to the meeting.
Can we make an exception for an emergency meeting?
Absolutely, yes.
Question for Sue. So let's take a, a regular planning board meeting. So if me and Randy. Comes to the meeting. And another council member is on Zoom. Does whoever is responsible for the planning board. I think it's, is it orderly? Does orderly say council may attend? A quorum or a majority, you know what I'm trying to say?
I, I know what you're saying, and you're concerned that it would be an illegal meeting because you'd be there as a quorum. That doesn't really apply if you're not participating in the meeting. You are just watching the meeting. It, it has to do with whether or not you're doing town business and just watching the meeting. I mean, if you suddenly speak up and you all start participating in the conversation and influence the votes, then we have a problem.
Point on public comment that said five minutes, and our public comment time is three minutes, should we just standardize everything to three minutes?
Yeah, and, and that was what was on the original rules of procedure for the planning board, so I just carried it over, but I think it makes a lot of sense.
Just make it match councils at three minutes.
Yep. Where, where is that, Jay, exactly in the?
Oh, let's see, that was so long ago. Okay, public input, article five, section two. Yeah, says five minutes, so strike that to three.
Okay.
Do we want to add the ten minute limitation thing in there as well?
Just so the same rules that are on.
Sure.
Basically follow Roberts rules is basically what you're getting at.
So ten minutes for groups. Right?
So if, if a committee. Doesn't have a quorum, then theoretically, then they cannot meet.
Be kind of pointless.
Okay.
Go home.
This, ah, is that, you remember the board of adjustment meeting? That you had four, four members here? And the other guy was in and.
Yeah, he's an artist.
Is that, so technically, is that you had a quorum. But is that you could have a split vote.
We had a quorum, but what was unique about that particular situation is because of the remote meetings, I can't quote the statute, but. But when someone is, is attending remotely like that, both parties have to be okay with that. In that instance, one party was not, was not, the other party was, and so they ended up moving forward with just four people. So they did have a quorum, and they still had a quorum after that, for, for fifth person was not allowed to participate.
And that only applies in a quasidisciplicary public hearing. So if you had a public hearing and one of you was on Zoom, it would be fine.
Right. Yeah, and that, and that's why both attorneys made a point of, of pointing that out, was that? Yeah.
And also it only applies when there is a. Emergency order issued by the government.
I do appreciate, I think you guys have done it, this is a good layout, and I think this is kind of what I was after in, in making sure that all the boards are operating under the same, same rules and, and procedures. And I think it'll make it easier on you guys as well, and that way there's not a different set of rules for every board and.
Right.
All this other stuff, it's, you know, it's a little bit more professional and organized to have it this way.
Yeah.
I agree with you, um, and I, I love this template, and I think it, it standardizes things in a way that makes, just spells it out very clearly what's expected of each board. And how they are to conduct their meetings, and, and I'm very happy with this change.
There was one more thing that Daniel and I discussed, was that once you were to approve for the individual boards, that we would amend the general rules and make these attachments. So it's all in one place.
We go with a B.
Attachments, oh, yes.
That's the, that's the different individual committees.
Yes.
We talked about that ag committee being attendance, I mean, we're really light on people that can serve on the ag committee as it is.
Yes.
And they have, you know, nine o'clock on a Friday, sometimes they have, you know, whatever cows to vaccinate or pay to bail or something.
Sure.
So I think the attendance rules need to be different for the ag committee.
Yeah, that's.
It's hard enough.
It's up, it's up to the board, this was, this is a request of the board at one point, was to provide all the attendance policies, the liaison, who takes minutes and that sort of thing, so. Yeah, these are certainly open to discussion whenever the council wants to move forward.
So I'd be in favor of, on that committee, only waiving in the absentee policy. Gets might serve, they're stuck.
During the winter time, it's that you go and get everybody here. But is that during the summertime? And at seventy-five, eighty degrees outside, chances are is that you may not even have nobody show up. But Shay, yes, I agree with.
I'm, I'm good with this, with, with this recommendation, do, do you need a motion, Daniel?
Yeah.
That we accept this as our new policy for our boards and committees.
Yes, that we would need a motion to get it approved, and if the town, if the council does do that, we can do that, if you want to see the revisions first, we can do that, it's up to you guys.
I'm, I'm confident that Sue wrote down. Discussed at this meeting, so I'll make a motion that we accept this policy, policy for our guidelines for volunteer committees and boards. With changes that were made by council tonight.
Just to clarify, this is just for the planning board?
So.
Do you?
I misspoke, for the planning board.
Okay.
And we will, we'll talk about the rest of it later.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, what's next?
I'm sorry, just for clarification, did that motion include changing the ag advisory committees attendance policy as well? Was that part of that, is that the intent? Or do you want to vote on that separately?
With the change, yeah, that was one of the changes we discussed.
So we will work to prepare these for the rest of your boards and, and bring them to you as we have them complete.
Okay, what's this, um, agenda item H one, the water sewer committee?
The water sewer committee is the Hendersonville, Henderson County Water Sewer Advisory Committee, I mean, it's quarterly. And right now, Councilman Snyder is the town's appointee, and over the last several months, there's been some challenges getting quorum. So the city of Hendersonville is requesting that all jurisdictions add a second member to the board as a, as an alternate. And so if an appointee is unable to attend, then the alternate moves into that seat as a full acting board member. That can be a staff person, it can be an elected official, but they, they did recently adopt their revised charter and rules of procedure. Saying what I just said to you, so they just want to make sure they're going to reform.
Since, since I'm the appointee and Daniel comes anyway. I'd like to make a nomination that we appoint Daniel as the alternate person from Mills River to this board.
Second. Sorry, Daniel, all those in favor? It's the most sense. Alright, or do we want to discuss, alright?
Daniel, can I ask a question for clarification?
Yes, please.
So in our, I want to make sure I understand this, in our charter for the planning board, we have changed it to seven members.
That had already happened back in June, there was already a motion to vote.
Okay, to change that, but was that in ordinances that it said at nine?
Yes, we have to amend the ordinance to make that.
Okay, so we did, we, alright.
That's a.
I was thinking we had to have a public hearing for some reason, because.
We will, we will, yeah, we have.
Can we schedule the public hearing to get it done?
No, we haven't, we haven't taken it to the planning board yet.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, that's, that's the next step is, is we need to actually strike through the text like we normally do for text amendments.
Right.
And take it to the planning board, I don't have the schedule in front of me, but it's, it's very, very soon, I want to be ready for this.
I'm just making, I want to make sure they were staying on top of that, because I want to make sure that we get that quorum issue settled as quick as we can.
Yes, and.
Okay.
And for clarification, the twenty nineteen clever of the year reminded me that. That we've been struggling with a quorum at the planning board, but you help me, and you don't count the vacant seats, right? So a quorum is technically four people because we have a vacancy on the board, but yes, your point is well taken, we will, we will jump on that as soon as we can.
That was my next question, are they short and do we need to make appointments sooner rather than later to that board?
Right now, your, 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 your board has not. Even though you've changed it to seven, the ordinance has nine, so, but you have six appointees, so that means that you're. At any given meeting, hopefully you have six, but your quorum's four, so it gives them two extra members. Now, I don't think they've really run into a problem yet, but yeah, appointments sooner rather than later ease that. Because they have very full agendas going forward through the fall.
So when, when are y'all looking to do this?
I was gonna ask, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'm, I'm ready to do it anytime.
Okay.
First, let's discuss how we're going to discuss it. So the planning board's the big one, so we need to start there. It's marked, I mean, it can, it's marked all over. So if we select, as a council member selects, do we all vote on it, or my choice is my choice?
I think it's fair that we all vote, I mean, it's same process, we're just making our recommendations. Randy agrees and Roger agrees with that, and I think we just do it like we normally would, same process. I guess the question is, how do we start? So you want to do chairman and vice chair, or vice chair, and then I'll go, and then you go, and then Randy is? And just come back around the same order?
If I start the first one, someone else can start the second.
Well, so just go, and then just keep going, I don't want it, sounds good.
Alright, so planning board. Hold up my sheet, I'll start with Jeff Moore, he's in my district. And that was, that was a question, he is district, he's my district, district three, because he's on my side of schoolhouse. So. All those in favor of Jeff Moore? Aye. Sorry.
Do you need us just second? Do you need us to second?
No, you never have to second. It's just our tradition.
Is that right? Which way are we going?
He's second. He's vice.
Yes, so um, I'd like to nominate Lonnie Oliver. He's been serving on the finance committee and I think he'll make an outstanding representative on the planning board.
Question. Is that I'm not opposed to to Lonnie? Is that? I'm kind, is that I'm kinda opposed. To two people, to one person being on two different boards.
We dissolved the finance.
The finance committee is gone.
Well, okay. Is that, is that? Let's take the name out of that. How about that? Is that I have a problem. With one person sitting on two different boards, no matter what it is. So I'm fine with 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 your guy. Personally. Personally, is that if he could resign. Of the finance board or? Go ahead.
There's no need to because we dissolve the finance committee. It is no longer.
So that would bring up the issue of Burt Limpus on the ag committee and the board adjustment. And again, our ag committee, we're just scraping to get people as it is. So.
I think the committee should be exempt from anything like that.
Well, and there is a little bit, I mean, we have to remember that most of these committees vote on things. The ag committee isn't an advisory. It is an advisory committee. So I think it's a little bit different.
We forgot to ask about a term on the last point. Are you starting over with the two-year terms?
Does that complicate things that everything two years from now, we got to re-point everyone or?
If nobody quits.
I mean, eventually that will happen and it'll stagger.
Eventually it will stagger.
My suggestion would just be that we fulfill the, like, if you you did, Jeff, he would fill the remainder of, you know, it would be for his remainder term. He's filling an empty seat. So he would, so it'd be the seat that was empty from District One.
Does that work? Okay. All right. So the motion was for Lonnie Oliver and I'll second it. All those in favor of Lonnie Oliver? That's two.
So I'll make a motion to approve Cheryl Janikowski to the planning board.
All those in favor of Cheryl Janoski? Aye.
Just to clarify, that is District Two.
All right, Roger.
I would like to put Jim Foster on there.
Okay, in favor of Jim Foster, say aye. Randy?
Sherry Hill.
I was in favor of Sherry Hill, say aye. She's my district three. Okay, so what does it give us in District Three? Two twos. Okay, so my turn, Heath Wiggins. All those in favor of Heath Wiggins, say aye. Aye, any opposed?
And I will nominate Joe Elliott.
I'll second.
All those for Joe Elliott, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can we? Can we figure out the districts here?
Right, right now, we're balanced.
We're good, yeah.
Right now, we've got two from each district. So we're balanced. So we need one more.
That's seven.
Is that seven?
Yeah.
All right. Three from three, okay.
And two from two. Yeah.
That's right.
Jim and Cheryl.
She's on Forge Drive. I believe that's three. So you have one from two and one, two, three, from three. He just is actually Cheryl's neighbor.
Actually, it's Sherry.
The point is, it's the same district.
It's Sherry too. Because, you know, like, Schoolhouse Road is the split. So like, my side of Schoolhouse. Yeah, we vote for, we're not the other. There's not a lot of other candidates. Randy's in three. Close as it's gonna get, it's gonna change every time.
Yeah. Me too. Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, that's planning board. What board do you want next?
So on the planning board, we've got. Three from District Three. Help me, Sue. Two. Or one from District Two. Two from District Two.
Two from one. And one from two.
Is, is it? Is it? Isn't this why the? We started out. To restructure? Is it? I'm just asking.
Who are the people from District Three?
Sherry Hill, Heath Wiggins, Jeff Moore, and Cheryl Janoski.
I personally am okay with that, being from District Two, because I feel like those people contribute.
Different ways.
They're invaluable to the planning board. And, you know, I understand everybody gets caught up in the district things of Mills River to balance it out. Mills River is a small enough community and we should be able to to come all together at the end of the day, and I think that's the goal. And, you know, if I lived on one side of the street versus one side of the street, that doesn't mean that I'm going to have a totally different mindset of planning. So I I don't see that it's that big of a deal, in my opinion.
And and since your district is the one that's short.
My district is the one that's short.
Right, so.
So the next seat comes out, I'm coming after you.
And and these are gonna start coming up in the spring again too, so.
I hate to bring this up, but technically, you have appointed seven people. And you still have a an older member that's not been.
So do we need, okay, so.
Ryan Perry.
So we need to make a motion to not.
Terminate his.
To terminate Ryan Perry's.
Appointment.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so that's how you want us to do it going forward, Sue, if we don't reappoint someone to de-point.
I think it's, I think it is. I think it's cleaner.
All right, let's, how about the Board of Adjustment next?
So when do we want these vacant, these new appointments to take effect?
I I was given direction that anyone who was already existing on the planning board would fulfill their term and any new people's terms would start today.
All right, to the Board of Adjustment.
Well, I I would suggest. Maybe we tackle these, you know, one board each meeting. Rather than wear ourselves out tonight. We've got other business ahead.
Okay, well, that was the important one to get filled, right? All right, to staff updates. So you get to lead us off when you're ready.
Um, I have a very quick staff update. Your financial report for fiscal year. Twenty twenty-one will be presented in November. And next Monday is Daniel's birthday. Just FYI.
And do we have anything? Arlie's not here. Do we have anything from tax?
Patty, you want to give a quick update on the bills we've seen?
Taxes have been coming in. Bill's gotten mailboxes on Monday and we have some people that really like to come in and pay. So, yeah. We've had a good collection rate so far. No.
Patty, tell about Marvin.
Oh, yes. So Roger got to experience Marvin the other day. Marvin is the kiosk that we have set up in the lobby. For when people want to come in to pay with a credit card. They can actually do that now. We don't have to turn them away. They can actually use the kiosk to pay with their credit cards.
It's an iPad on a rolling stand.
Yeah, it looks like a robot.
What's that?
Right, and I'm there to talk them and guide them through it.
So has anybody called and demanded to speak to Marvin yet? That's what I'd like to know.
No, not everybody knows his name.
Hey, Roger got a firsthand demonstration.
Right, Roger got a tutorial.
Okay, and from the Parks and Rec Director, Nicole, anything else?
We are no longer in ankle-deep water, so we're, things are looking up. Now, let's say we're getting there on flood cleanup, so we're just gonna keep continuing working on that. You know, we'll get it over time, get everything cleaned up, backed open and looking good back there. Other than that, we did have our. Party in the park on August the eighth, and we did give away one hundred and sixty-five bike helmets to kids, so people were very appreciative. So thank you all and big thank you to the Mills, friends of the Mills River Library, who also donated money to make that happen. Coming up, we'll be hosting the Mills River Valley Five K on September the twelfth. And then also hosting the county's Walk to End Alzheimer on September twenty-fifth. And then our usual blood drive is October the first. So hopefully you all can come up to some of those things.
Thirty-first would have been more appropriate.
Sorry?
The thirty-first would have been more appropriate. Okay, from the zoning administrator, Michael.
Daniel and I attended the Henderson County Comprehensive Plan, one of the kickoff stakeholder meetings yesterday with a lot of the other. Other municipal leaders, again, providing preliminary input for the county's land use and growth plan going forward. Public notice went out for the rezoning R twenty-one oh-three, which is scheduled for a public hearing before this council on September ninth. Letters went out yesterday. Property was posted and the ad should be in the paper. Parties' final approval, both the major subdivision plat and the development plan are going before the planning board on September seventh. I also have a firm, I don't have an application yet, but a firm multi-plan, multi-family development proposal. That's gonna be presenting a concept plan before the planning board also at that meeting. So it's gonna be a busy meeting. Last thing I wanted to touch on is I have been fielding calls from some citizens with flooding complaints. I've submitted some NC DOT requests. For drainage issues, road maintenance on behalf of citizens related to tropical storm Fred. I have, I just want to relay the council because I've been asked to do so by some citizens. That we've received multiple questions, comments, and complaints from some citizens about why the town isn't participating in the National Flood Insurance Program. Or why we don't have a flood damage prevention ordinance, which basically prohibits, makes flood insurance too costly. For residents in our jurisdiction and also basically limits the town from receiving the full amount of federal aid or FEMA assistance. You know, if we had a flood disaster similar to what happened in Haywood County. So I've been working. To address some resident concerns with that, but was asked to relay that, so passing that along. It's all done.
So isn't that if we participate in that plan, anyone could build in the flood plain? And we'd lose a lot.
Under regulation.
We'd lose a lot of farmland.
So anyone can build in the flood plain right now. So that's, that doesn't, the National Flood Insurance Program doesn't affect that. If the town entered the program, there would be. Permanent requirements to build in the floodway, typically where you see the highest velocity water flowing during a flood. You could still build in the flood plain. This doesn't affect agriculture, so farms that are farming can continue to farm. If they were, if a farm, for example, wanted to build like a pole barn, that's exempt from the regulations in the flood, for the flood plain model ordinance. So what it would, the big change, especially going back to Mike's comments and questions, as he's heard from citizens lately. Is it would allow them to purchase flood insurance at a subsidized rate through the National Flood Insurance Program. And in theory, that could drive some development in the flood plain because now people could insure their homes at a much more affordable rate. But again, they can build those homes in the flood plain today and and request that FEMA modify the max to show their property not in the flood plain anymore. And they wouldn't need flood insurance anymore. So there's, there's no restrictions on it at this point. The National Flood Insurance Program will put some regulations in place regarding building immediately adjacent to waterways. But there's a lot of flexibility in the town's ability to set its standards. If you want to meet just the basic minimums, if you want to go beyond. All that is 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 a variable that the town can make a decision on.
Also, a point is that if the town did. Participate in the flood ordinance plan with the insurance, it would also drive up the cost. Of land. Used by farmers. Because is that if I own ten acres in the flood plain, I might get twenty dollars an acre. But if the town participates, participates in the program. Is that now I can tell the farmer is that I've got other options. Now I'm gonna ask two hundred dollars an acre. And so we're talking about preserving agriculture. Is that if we join the the flood plane thing, is that it's just another stick. In the farmer's. Thing that is gonna cost them more money. Now, also, being in the fire department. And Mills River Village is a good example. Before Mills River become a town, there's houses that gets flooded that they cannot get flood insurance. Well, the fire department has to go down there and get those people out because of where they built. So is that this is why Mills River has never joined. The flood plan. Now, another question is that where's this rezoning at? That you talked about.
I'm sorry, you're talking about the public hearing set for September ninth? What's your question? Five ninety-eight miles due drive. It was. You're just talking about the other items in my staff report?
Yeah.
Okay, there was a multi-family proposal.
Where's that at?
On Jeffress Road, there's a property for sale over there near Cavalry Church.
Okay, okay.
And just to be clear, I'm not suggesting flood plain regulations change. I'm just delaying what I've heard from the public.
Right, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, and lastly, Daniel.
Real quickly, we. are continuing to work on the permit software, Mike's been working on that behind the scenes, getting all of the data we need put together and move forward with that. And then we do have a bit of a scheduling challenge in November that I would like the board to consider. Both meetings in the month of November, fall, and holidays, one is on Veterans Day and one is on Thanksgiving. And the, we would like to get the art report presented to you in November, so November 4th or November 18th would work. We would like to go ahead and get that resolved tonight if we could. If council has a preference, we would be happy to accommodate.
I don't have a preference.
Is, will the 18th work for everybody? Okay.
So we probably, since we're changing our official meeting schedule, we can do this by motion. And I'm gonna suggest we move the meeting at the 11th to the 18th.
Cancel the 25th, okay. I make a motion to move the November 11th meeting to the 18th and cancel the meeting on November 25th.
I will second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Count it? Okay, anything else, Daniel?
That's all, thank you.
Okay, other council comments or you ready?
I've just got a real quick one. I know I-26 is a headache for everyone right now. I was at a French Bar River MPO meeting today and the DOT informed us that the completion date for I-26 from Airport Road all the way up to I-40 is April 29th of 2024. Yes, so, and right now it is 27.55% complete, according to the DOT.
So, I just wanted to point it out, I think it was August 10th, the 10th, 11th, that the DOT went and did the guardrail on Butler Bridge Road. And I got several emails from people who live in that area thanking us for that, and I wanted to thank you guys for supporting that project as well, and Daniel for you working on that with DOT. And Jim, I know you got involved in that and I appreciate that as well, so I think it'll be a, a big benefit to the community and help with safety in that area. And I think the bridge, doesn't that road open back up?
Yeah, what's that?
It's supposed to be open in September.
September. September, okay.
There you have it.
Maybe that would help with school traffic in the mornings.
Just updating on bridges, too, I did find out while they were clearing the Hooper Lane Bridge that they are supposed to start construction on the new Hooper Lane Bridge next month, so that will be happening.
All right, other council comments? Yep, okay, I'm going to make a motion to go into closed session, pursue it. All right. Yeah, you got a minute, party break. Blood drive? September.